Okay, so the microphone's on now and Kathy has started the recording. So I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:04. Please join in the pledge. Flag's over there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands in the nation under God. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So head through our agenda. Public input. Correspondence. Nothing other than what we have. And was already sent around or posted to the shared drive as part of the meeting reports. Approval of meeting minutes. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11, 2024. David Olson seconds. And so if you have any questions or updates that are needed for the minutes. We're all good. All in favor? I oppose. Done. All right, and so that's David, David, David and me. Thanks for voting. All right. So I'm just going to explain a little bit first before we jump into our old business. So here in the room, we have David Olson, Nancy Ryan Chair, David Resendus, Kathy Galvis, Recording Secretary, David Hornbach, Public Site Member, Roy Steiner, outgoing Public Site Member, Dr. Carver, and Jen Barryal from Board of Ed, and Mark Dupre, and Geraldine from STV. So last night, the Board of Selectmen met and appointed people to the Public Site and Building Commission. So a new member, Jeff Baclemba, was appointed to fill a vacancy, and I believe he was appointed to fill Roy's vacancy. However, Dan forgot to call him and tell him to come to the meeting tonight. So he's not here. We'll have to get him up to speed soon. And hopefully, I'll get some contact info from him and send him a meeting schedule, et cetera. And then we'll get emails for him so Kathy can add him to the distribution list. Also at the meeting last night, David Resendus, who was originally, which I didn't quite understand at the time, appointed to be just from the Board, an ad hoc member from the Board of Ed for the HVAC project, the Bethel High School HVAC project. However, David has expressed an interest in becoming a full member, and hopefully, he's still because he got appointed. So he was appointed to fill a vacancy that had been created when Dino Wiltieri resigned, and then Gerald Roche was appointed, and Gerald resigned. So now you're filling that vacancy. And then David Hornbach was reappointed and for another term. Another, his term was up and he was appointed for another full term. I've been back and forth with all the members, trying to keep everybody updated on what we need to do, et cetera. And the biggest thing was for me to keep a quorum going. And what was determined during this past month was that the Charter specifically says that members serve until someone is appointed to take their place. Now, since Roy and John Menti resigned with an end date on their resignation, then they can't be voting members. However, I told Roy if he wanted to come in and offer any input on, because he's been, you know, part of a lot of the different projects for such a long time, he would be able to do that, just can't vote. David Hornbach can vote, David Resendus can vote, David Olson can vote, I can vote. David Olson and I, our terms are up. We're not being reappointed. However, the Charter also says, like I said, you serve until someone takes your place. No one's taken our place yet. So we can continue to serve. Don't have to get reappointed, don't have to get sworn in. So we'll be doing that until we get some more folks on board. And we'll just make sure that we always have a quorum for meetings coming up. And as we look at this schedule, if, so John Perna didn't specifically resign. I believe his term is up. And he's told some people, not me, that he's not intending to continue. So someone will have to be appointed to take his place. Although he could attend meetings and vote. So the appointments that were made, I have the minutes here from the Board of Selectmen meeting last night. The appointments that were made were filling seats number six, seven, and eight. But I don't know who was, whose seats those were. I'd have to go on the town website and find that out, and I'm not going to do that now. But we have a quorum. We could, Dan was here earlier. He had to go to Charter Revision. And he explained that we can all vote on anything, mostly invoices, and anything we vote on is fine. Not have any problems with that. And again, I will make sure that we always have a quorum for meetings upcoming and help get us through a transition of new members, et cetera. So that being said, let's move along into our agenda. Thank you, Roy, for coming in. Hopefully, you can help us through a couple of different things we have going on here. So first on the agenda is the Police Station Training Range. And back in December, CES Commissioning Agent made arrangements to be at the range to do their final seasonal commissioning review. And I sent that around to everybody. I also uploaded it to the shared drive. And basically, the report was everything's, they couldn't get in remotely. That, we tried to get that to happen because that was what we did with the, with the main building back, however many years, when we had to do commissioning, seasonal commissioning on that. We had to do a whole year. But that wasn't happening. And so Alan Bouchard came out, did the whole report, sent that out. And we also found out through Lieutenant Libertini and also with Alan's checking that the makeup air unit has been functioning in unoccupied modes. And so the set point was 50 degrees. It's been kicking on a lot. And we started to have a conversation about should we set it back to something so it wouldn't kick on as much. And I contacted Lieutenant Libertini today because there's, he has, he goes through a portal, he says, with Action Target. There's no like call somebody up, somebody comes out, goes through a portal, asks questions, gets them answered. So he's working on getting it set back to 45. Again, I'm not an HVAC expert, so I can't say whether it'll make it run less or more. I don't know if anybody has, David Hornbach thought it would be probably a good idea, but also I asked Lieutenant Libertini to make sure they check with Action Target to make sure that it's not going to adversely affect the equipment. Now, Action Target said in the very beginning that we would not need to have it run in unoccupied mode. That it didn't matter what the heat was, hot or cold, their equipment would be fine. We just want to make sure of that. So hopefully, you had a chance to look at that report, and I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. I didn't have anything specific. But good to know that the equipment's running, that the HVAC type equipment that they had to commission is running as it's supposed to be. Anybody have any questions? All right. The other thing I started to, I have been looking into, last month, I had to do an update to the Board of Selectmen as I have to do as Chair periodically. And started out by saying, because it's something I had forgotten to bring up several times, or I was interrupted and couldn't continue, was the Eversource incentives, which John Perna has always been great about making sure that we take care of and get. And we had gotten a report that we would be getting around $30,000. And so I reported that, and Brad from Finance said we haven't gotten it yet. So I started with Mark to look into it to find out where we were with that. And it has, so if Finance hasn't received a check, then everything isn't completed. And I think where we are is that labor work was completed, but at the end, when units were started up and the commissioning was done, those reports needed to go to Eversource, and we think that didn't happen. So we're working on, on checking into that to make sure that we get, either get that completed, or if the time has run out, because I know there's usually a timeframe that we go back in and fill out forms and make sure they get all the information they need. And I think, oh, so budget hasn't changed much. We do have one invoice from CES. Since CES finished all their commissioning, they gave us a final invoice. I have emailed ESC, because I believe we may have an outstanding invoice from them. I emailed to ask if they are complete with all their work. Is there anything they need to finish, or is there something they need to? They're leaving that open because they have to follow along for so many months to make sure everything's done. And I haven't heard back yet, so I will keep checking on that, because we would like to know a final budget once we get this, all the invoices paid. So if we don't have anything else, we can do the CES invoice. Like I said, it's their final invoice. And I can put it up here if I remember how to do it. Okay. Just give me a minute, because I don't do this on a regular basis. So I, from meeting to meeting, I always kind of forget. Anybody who wants to can help and remind me how to do this, because I'm seeing it on my screen, but you're not seeing it on yours. So back here. Hang on. Sorry, I think I just signed myself out. I'm sorry. Do you need to see this? Okay.
I think we're okay.
I know. You guys don't need to see it. I'm just trying to do the right thing. So I will make a motion that we approve Consulting Engineering Services, Inc. invoice number dated December 31, 2024, for the Police Station Firing Range or Training Range in the amount of $2,800. David Olson seconds. Any questions? Again, this is per their contract, their final invoice. So we should be good to go once this is finished. All in favor? I oppose. Done. Thank you. If I have to share anything else, I'll figure it out more quickly. I practiced earlier, but I will. No, I have to sign back into the meeting though. All right. So moving on, Rockwell and Johnson Schools. The only thing we have is a, turn my camera off. We have an invoice, actually. And it's the final invoice from STV from Geraldine working on the audit. And once that all got completed, we received all the funds, et cetera. STV put together a final invoice, which, if you want it on the screen, I'll put it up there. Otherwise, I sent it around for everyone. And let's see. If you don't need it, fine. I will make a motion that we approve this invoice from STV, invoice number 90032932, dated December 24, 2024. For, this one's under Rockwell, because we've expended the Johnson part of their contract in the amount of $1,001. David Olson seconds. Anybody have any questions? As I said, this is all Geraldine working on the, the final parts of the audit. All in favor? I oppose. Done. I don't think there's anything more for schools. We had a big report last time, and I think we're in a place where we can hopefully, you know, I did the, sent out the reports that Geraldine had sent, the final reports showing all the final, condensed version of all the final numbers and reimbursement amounts. Did pretty good on the reimbursement amounts. And I think we can kind of get into a place of probably taking this off our agenda soon.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can take it off. Because I don't think there's any more outstanding issues.
Right, right. Yep. Okay, good. Thanks. And I don't think there's anything more with schools, unless somebody has a question or comment, et cetera. All right. So we will move into the Bethel High School HVAC upgrade. And a bunch of things to look look at with this. I will report that the contract was saved more, was finally signed, and I was, I uploaded it, I received a scanned copy and uploaded it to the shared drive. I was told it was filed with the town clerk, but I will check on that to make sure that happened. And where do you want to start with this? Do you want to, there was no meeting today. I know that, because some people weren't able to attend. So who wants to start?
Well, I will quickly. I mean, I do believe we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for Tuesday. Mark was able to coordinate all of the parties together to do some planning and try to develop a timeline. So that's great news forward. We're in a good shape. And really, I don't have anything else to report. I don't know if Geraldine does or Jen does.
Well, we do have to make decisions, but if we want to, any other updates that either Mark or Geraldine have, maybe we could, you know, put those in place first. Yeah, we're good. So we did send around, Geraldine sent around the STV review of the commissioning proposals for, for were received. And also sent the matrix. And if anybody wants to have it up on the screen, sure, she'd be much more efficient than me, but generally, also put together, STV also put together a recommendation to us that we will have to approve and then move forward in getting a contract in place for a commissioning agent. Geraldine.
Yes. So briefly, I can try to put up the matrix. I don't know if I'll have any better luck than Nancy, but but essentially, we had four responses to the RFP. We went through, read through all of them, compared them to the RFP to make sure all the requirements were fulfilled. Essentially, all four responding firms are qualified for the project. They all fulfilled all of the requirements requested in the RFP. They all have, they're all, they're all very experienced in commissioning the type of equipment that we're installing. They have varying degrees of experience in school projects, various degree, varying degrees of experience in projects located in Connecticut. Two of the firms are pretty well-known to us at STV, SES, and Colliers. The other two out of state firms, not familiar with at all. So I will qualify saying one firm is from New York and one is from Pennsylvania. At the matrix, let me see if I can do it.
You kind of have to open it, and then having it somewhere in the background, and then when you say present.
Correct.
That thing to put up, but mine didn't work.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing it.
So, so first of all, Kathy has to make you co-host.
Oh, that would be lovely. Thank you, Kathy.
There you go.
Ah, you're good.
Forgot about that.
Yes. Now, let's see if I need a window screen.
A little backwards.
All right, let's try this. Matrix. Yep, no, the share button does not do any. All right. Well, essentially, let me, let me talk through it. We did circulate it. It is on the, it is on the shared drive. Essentially, of the four responding companies, we have SES. Well, let me start, we evaluate, you, let me start at the very beginning. We're asking the PSBC to make a recommendation as to which firm to retain based on the results of the RFP analysis. So that includes analyzing, as it said in the RFP, you will be doing this based on considering price, experience, and previous, and previous performance. We did not call any references yet. We can do that if there is any desire by the PSBC folks to prolong this conversation. But right now, we're working just off of what they included in their proposals. So in terms of price, we have FTS out of, out of New York, out of New York, with the lower price of about $23,000 to do both the base services and an alternate service. So we're just combining it all together. It doesn't change the order of ranking in terms of fee. And we have SES with a proposed fee of $28,000. Catalyst out of Pennsylvania with a fee of $29,000, and Colliers, who is a local Connecticut firm out of Madison, their fee exceeded $48,000. Just so for ranking. In terms of their experience and their, and their proposals, in our assessment, SES and Colliers both provided kind of a superior proposal in the sense that they fully described and went into great length to, to address the project approach aspect, how they were going to do the work, how they were going to communicate, you know, their willingness to be part of the team. All of the firms had an adequate response to that, but we will say that SES and Colliers had had a sort of a more in-depth response to that. Other than that, Colliers and Catalyst both wanted to qualify their, their contract. SES and FTS did not. We have, I personally have some concerns about Catalyst, the firm from Bethlehem. They are assigning a project manager who lives in Connecticut. And they're listing that as their business address, which doesn't really, you know, not really kind of according to the rules. So if you look at the, if you also look at the summary that we attached, I outlined all that same information. We think that your best response will come from SES and, and/or Colliers. But understanding the difference in price proposed from those two local firms, our recommendation would be that the town retain SES for the services. They provided an extensive list of schools in Connecticut that they've worked with, school districts, schools. They have extensive experience with this, with similar air conditioning upgrades, HVAC upgrades. They will have the best understanding of the grant project process, should they have to be brought into that process. And I think you will get a good response from them in terms of scheduling and getting the task work completed. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to say more.
Yeah, if anybody has questions for Geraldine, jump right in. Yeah, go ahead, Roy.
Hi, Geraldine. I have one question as far as on, what was it, FST? I see they had done some projects in Danbury and Norwalk.
For sure.
Were they comparable? Did you know? I mean, you know, it seems like at least they had done a couple of local projects. So that was the only thing that, you know, and the pricing was a little bit better. So and I'm not, I'm not questioning your report at all. I was just wondering if there's been additional research on it.
So those two schools are, those two school projects are comparable. In fact, I would venture to say probably the Danbury project was a little larger and more extensive because it was a full renovation of that school, and they commissioned, you know, the entire new systems there. However, the RFP asked for, specifically asked for experience with similar projects, but also projects within the last three to five years.
Okay.
And that Danbury project was probably about eight years older. Not that, so they do have that experience. They, Danbury is somewhat, you know, in the area of Bethel. But it's, but it's not comparable to the long list of experience that either SES or Colliers have with schools in Connecticut.
Okay, thanks, Geraldine.
That's good information to know. And if we're just sort of looking more at, at cost, we would want to, to take that into consideration. It's been a while since they've done a school project and been in the area.
Right. And I will say that although price is a consideration, it was listed in the RFP as something that the commission would consider. You are not limited, obviously, to the low cost. This is not a bid, you know, this is not a hard bid situation where you have to justify not taking the low-cost consultant. This is a combination of qualifications and cost.
Great.
Agreed.
I would agree too. I'm actually going to make a motion that we can do any more discussion after if we need to. I will make a motion that we approve and retain Sustainable Engineering Services to be the commissioning agent for the Bethel High School HVAC project.
Second.
Second. So do we have any other, is the motion enough? Or do we need to, I don't have to put the amount, because yeah, we'll do that. So if there's any other comments or questions, either from commission members or from Board of Ed keeps, I don't know if you did any reviewing of the stuff, how it all looks, because I think I think the number of the things that Geraldine brought up are going to be greatly in our favor.
I can speak on behalf of the board. I mean, I, we met with Geraldine and discussed it, and I think we fully support the recommendation.
Anything else from anyone else?
Nancy, I was just going to echo what Dr. Carver said. In reviewing the recommendations, I found the same outcome as Geraldine. The one thing that I'd like to just make everybody aware of when we're also evaluating cost, Colliers had a note that they were not including any allocation for retesting equipment if it failed. And SES had a note that they were allocating, I believe it was two days, for retesting in the event of failure. So just to even further the cost difference between the two.
Yes. Good to note. Thank you, Tyler. Anything else from anyone? So let's vote. The motion, all in favor? I oppose and done. All right. Thanks for everyone for your input. So we'll have to be getting a contract from them for review and then get that signed. We shouldn't have to go to the Board of Selectmen for approval, because the money's already been approved. We're just allocating money as per the approval by referendum. So after that, what, what would you want to either Geraldine or Mark look at next as far as an update or a budget or?
So I would suggest that we review the budget, both in light of that, that the decision to retain SES and what that does to how we had budgeted professional services. And also to discuss the addition of professional services from Kohler Ronan for the construction administration portion of the project. They don't exactly balance each other out, but there's the impact there on the budget. And I really wish I could try again to, to get my, my screen share. But it's not like, oh.
Just wait. I figured it out.
Okay.
I think this is it, if it's the right one, because I know there was one to add in, but I don't want to make it bigger.
Okay. So that's, this should give you all the information. We had previously put together a very, it's a very streamlined budget, since the construction contract is a lump sum general contractor form of delivery. We just for this project have construction costs. I checked with Brad, the town will be, will not be booking any financing costs or bond costs to the project. So it is solely professional fees, which is STV is the owner's representative. The commissioning agent was, had been previously listed as a line item under professional fees. And now we are, we will be proposing to add the design engineer, the consulting engineer Kohler Ronan to the professional services portion. So as you might recall, the previous budget only had the, the $3,742,000 for the basic services in terms of construction. We are now proposing that we add officially to the project budget $120,000 for the exhaust fan alternate. Christine and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, you consulted with the state. They are amenable to that additional scope as long as we keep to, to the budget and the general description of the HVAC upgrades that are going to be made.
That's correct. And can I just, can I just add a little bit of, Jen, you want to say something? And can I just, can I just add a little bit of, Jen, you want to say something?
I was just going to agree that that's correct.
Okay. And maybe I'll just, well, while we're talking about it, I'll just explain a little bit about the Kohler Ronan fee. Cause I, I know that, that, that is something that's different than had been previously communicated. So we, we had initially paid for Kohler Ronan through our, our, the, so the, the town got an ARP SIR grant, an ARP, ARP grant, and we got an ARP SIR grant. We paid for the design work and a lot of the Kohler Ronan fees through that grant. And what happened was, and it's partially because kind of the project was delayed. On the school side, unlike the town side, we had a drop dead date that we had to spend the money. And that drop dead date was December 31st. And so while most of the, the, you know, the work on the bid specs and the design was covered through the grant, the, the fee to carry us through construction, I, I hope I'm using the right words, is what is remaining that has to be now included into this project. So I'm happy to answer any questions about why that switch occurred.
So while it wasn't unexpected, it's still necessary. So it's construction.
Yes.
Yeah, I would add that I think the original contract with Kohler Ronan really took, it was a, a more scope. And it only took this project, as Christine said, through design. When we got to the point where we needed, we need, we need a design professional during construction to, you know, to do site observation, to answer questions, to review shop drawings and submittals and to sign off on pay apps. We had Kohler Ronan provide a separate fee proposal just for the construction related activities. And it was actually originally $50,000, but, but the Board of Ed has already paid $2,500, I think of it. And so what the, the remaining balance of 47.5 would be applied to this budget. Now, if you recall, I don't, I don't, I don't have it in front of me and I don't recall. But the last, the, the original budget that we presented had a contingency of, obviously of, of like, you know, 250 some thousand dollars or something, which was really over and above what one would need to carry about this project. By adding in, by adjusting the commissioning agent line item, by adding in the Kohler Ronan construction administration fees and by adding alternate two in, for $120,000, we now have a, this kind of kickoff project budget. The remaining contingent, the contingency at this point going into construction is about three and a half percent of the total project costs, which some of you might recall, some of you might consider a little light. I think that we are used to going into construction with five, with a 5% contingency. But in this case, since the construction contract is a lump sum general contractor form of delivery, they're assuming more of the risk than under previous contracts that we've written as construction managers. So we at STV are comfortable with the 142, you know, for $1,000 contingency at this point. At the 3.5% amount, we, we just, we present it to you as our recommendation, but we would like to have you review and accept this budget as we kick off the actual construction phases. And the things highlighted in yellow are the things that, that actually, that changed from that last budget for your, they're not, they're not, no other alert there, just that those have changed.
So this, what, what we're looking at, which I'm trying to figure, I, I'm zooming, but it's not zooming on the screen. So there's another need to learn. So I had printed one and I know David has his up on the screen, but I showed my. So right now, what we're looking at is this budget has the Kohler Ronan amounts in there and also alternate two in the budget, leaving that three and a half percent contingency, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And after, so reviewing so, a lot of the different things and where we are right now, et cetera. STV feels comfortable with that remaining contingency that we have.
Yes.
Okay.
And so I'm not certain that action is required, but I think, you know, a discussion and a nod that this is, this is how we will kick off the project probably would be in order.
I think we can, we can say that we've reviewed this most recent, recent budget tracking report from STV and agree that, unless there's others that don't agree. But if there's any input from David and even Roy, even though we can't vote on where, now with the budget, let us know. Does anybody have anything? Dave Olson said, looks good to him.
Yeah.
You're good with it, Dave Orvath?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I, I think we just need to go with that because it, it just seems like, and it's like any project, you know, you think you got everything covered and there's always something that comes up. But I think I'm comfortable with, with possibly things coming up, especially with the way that the Save More contract is put together and that they're covering a lot of, they're, they're covering all the abatement and all of that. So we feel like we need to have a motion, we can do that. But I think all we can say that the commission agrees that, and if you need a copy of it to attach or something, you can do that. Agrees that this updated budget tracking report from STV is a good place. That's, that's what we're starting with. That's what we're going forward with. All right. So I can get that off the screen now, even though sort of see it. Okay. What else do we have with the project before we do invoices?
I think that's all we have pending the meeting next week to actually get the work kicked off.
I think one thing that if we can look at during that meeting next week is something along the lines of how we, now that we know that we have the Kohler Ronan part, then we have to make sure those invoices where whoever they get sent to gets, then gets sent to the commission for review before a meeting, so we can pay them in a timely fashion. So we'll have to have that on somebody's radar and updated budget reports periodically from STV. And just who, who's going to talk to who? And I think that's part of what, what you're doing next week with the meeting, Mark.
Yeah.
I know that Save More is going to be there, STV, who else? Oh, high, somebody from the high school, somebody from Kohler Ronan, Craig, Craig's going to be there, right? Yeah. So all of the different sort of pieces of the team will be at that meeting. If anyone from public site wants to attend that meeting, I can send you the info. It's at 2:30 on Tuesday, is that?
Correct.
Yes, 2:30 Tuesday at the high school, that's after school. So they'll be able to have access to parts of the school that they wouldn't during day. So if any Dave Orvath or David, if you wanted to check in, we can let you know the details. I think you're just meeting in the front office lobby.
To you, David, if you want it.
All right, what is it?
14.
Yeah.
Tuesday, 14 to 2.
No, unfortunately. Oh, you know what?
What's? Check it, check your calendars, let me know or let.
Actually, the 14th is the passing of the baton for the NGRTC cadet commander, which is my son passing it off at one o'clock. So what time, and I'll be at the high school.
Oh, 2:30. That's good.
It's one, I'll be there.
Yeah, so we'll just make sure we forward the info to you and both of you. And if you can go there, great. If you can't, that's fine. I'm not gonna do it since.
Yeah.
All right, great. So again, as, as you're in that meeting, I, I just want to convey that we want to make sure what the sort of like line of communication is going to be about the project, especially about getting invoices out. I know that applications for payment from Save More are going to have to go through a process before they end up with us for approval, et cetera. Make sure we get all the information that we need in place. We'll start working on the contract for SES, et cetera. Okay.
I think. Yes, is definitely our, our next most important thing to do. Yeah. And at that meeting, we're putting together an agenda. I'm going to work with Jen on that to make sure that we address everything with it that's important to the high school, especially the, the calendar that the high school has. And the plan that I would have is have Save More send us their invoice. We would do a, a pencil review of it. And if we find anything in improper or incorrect, then we would send it back to them before we forwarded it on to both the board and to, to the, excuse me, the commission and to Kohler Ronan, who technically is the professional designer of record. So for that application for payment to be formally approved, they would have to sign off on it. So my direction to Save More at that point would be send it to us. We'll pencil rec it. If it looks good, then we'll send it on both to the, to Kohler Ronan for sign off and then up through the process once they've signed off on it. So then I would, I would see that it was sent off to you, Nancy, for the, for the board to review and approve. But.
Right. And, and Mark, we should probably talk that through because I think Kohler Ronan is, is expecting to get the pencil recs.
Sure. Well, they'll, they'll get it after it comes to us, but then we'll take the first pass at it and then they'll get it.
Yeah, and then Kohler Ronan will have to do it before it comes to us. I think we're, we're the five, once Kohler Ronan signs off, then it comes to us.
Yeah. Right, because they're, they're ultimately responsible for it as the, the design professional in charge, so.
Okay. Anything else?
And we will track the budget. We're, we're doing a, a transition from Mike Dwayne to a gentleman named Rick Davidow, which many of you may know or may not know. So he will be attending these meetings in the future. And he will be the gentleman in charge of tracking budgets, working with Geraldine for that and attending the meetings. You will, all, anyone who attends, Tyler, Jen, Dave, anybody who attends on Tuesday will meet Rick there. Mike will still be around for reference and to help Rick with the transition. But af- after, I'd say, two, three weeks, maybe four, you won't, you won't see Mike unless we need him, so.
Okay, thanks.
Just filling you in.
That, great, great. That's good to know. Um, so anything else before we do a couple of invoices? So as, as far as the chain of communication kinds of things, in the future, will, for meeting, public site meeting, we'll be transitioning from Michael to Rick. And he will be at meetings, but all you guys, Carolyn and Mark, you won't need to be at meetings, correct?
That is correct. I mean, my role on the project was to assist with anything related to these pre-construction budgets, any, any grant and contract tasks that, that we can help with. But yeah, once construction, once real construction starts, I'm kind of in the background and Rick will end up being your, your point person. But obviously I'm still here for reference and I will be assisting him on things as he needs it. So he might see me.
Okay. It's always good to see your smiling face.
Thank you.
And then on a regular basis, I'm thinking either Jen or Tyler, but unless there's something that you need to, like, what, you guys have to figure out through like Board of Ed, either Dr. Carver, Tyler, or Jen, or all of you, do you need to be on a meeting? Or is it more like you need to explain something to us that we need to know that we don't know? Maybe you need to be there so you don't all have to always. I guess you guys love to figure that out. Who's going to be here, who's going to answer questions? Yeah, okay. Good, good, good. All right, so we, let's do invoices. We have three, one from STV, two to Kohler Ronan. And if you want them up on the screen, now that I figured out how to do that, I can. Otherwise, I did send them around, I can just go do them. So I will make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine, zero, zero, three, two, eight, three, two, dated December 11, 2024. This did come in right at the date of our last meeting for the Bethel High School HVAC project for the month of November in the amount of $3,311.
Okay.
Dave, second. Orvath, second. Everybody's second. Any questions? This is probably about what we'll be seeing for monthly invoice. The last one was larger because it was a several months. No questions, let's vote. All in favor? I oppose, done. And then Kohler Ronan. So we have two because they, two different months. So one for a month of November, one for the month of December. I'll do this one first. I'll make a motion that we approve Kohler Ronan invoice number two, two, zero, two, one, dot, zero, two, dash, one, eight, dated November 30th, 2024, for services rendered through, uh, November 30th, 2024 in the amount of $3,550.
Sure.
Dave Olson, second. Any questions? Comments? All in favor? Opposed? Done. And then the final Kohler Ronan, I make a motion that we approve Kohler Ronan invoice number two, two, zero, two, one, dot, zero, two, dash, one, nine, dated December 31st, 2024, for services rendered through December 31st, 2024 in the amount of $3,662.50. Dave Olson, second. Any questions on this? All in favor? I oppose, done. And so Jen, do you think the Kohler Ronan invoices will, will always go kind of through your office? Be able to get to come to us or is that how?
That's how it's set up right now, but we can, if you want a different process, we can talk about it.
Yeah, now that, now that the fee is no longer being covered by a Board of Ed grant, my, my guess and my recommendation would be that those invoices be addressed to the finance department, like every other, you know, invoice. And then you or the next chair kind of, you know, compile them, we'll, we'll receive them all at the same time to bring to a meeting. We will, we would encourage, if you want us to review them ahead of time, we would encourage them to be shared directly from Kohler Ronan at the same time that they send them to the town. But my guess is their contract probably says where, you know, who is the, the recipient of the invoices? And it's typically somebody at the town.
So is that something that, yeah, because usually it's addressed to other projects that we've done. They're either addressed to Dan Carter or Person Selectmen, whatever. So is that something that we should be doing as, thinking about how?
Right now, the contract, the original contract was with the Board of Ed. That's why the invoices are still addressed that way.
Right.
I, I don't think it's a, a problem to ask them to send the invoices somewhere else. I think they would accommodate that.
And it just might be easier to have them all coming to the same place so that they're all collected together, invoices and other, you know, correspondence on the project.
Yeah, because what, if, if the grant has some sort of something that says, I, I don't know if that, that's any paperwork that would be, is there an audit that's going to happen? Would they look at how the money is being routed, so to speak? I mean, it's all the same pot of money. It's just.
Right. It would, yeah, I don't know how strict that would be. The, the grant comes to the town. The grant has a line item called project management that we are going to put that those Kohler Ronan invoices against, the same as, as the STV fee. I don't know what the audit will look like at the end, but it certainly would be easier and cleaner. Yes, if all the invoices were addressed to the, to the town and processed in the same way. And, and I think Jen's right. It's just a matter of asking Kohler Ronan to address them to a different place. They're all coming to the municipal center, right, so.
Were you receiving them electronically, Jen?
Yeah, they're actually going to Tyler.
Oh, okay.
It would actually be nice if we could get a copy of them so that we could add that to our project budget sheet.
Already in there.
Yeah.
Geraldine already put it in.
Well, the, the, now we're going to track, actually, we will be tracking individual invoices or cumulative invoices against that budget. So yeah, we should, we should see them. If we don't see them monthly, we're going to have to ask for them. So yeah, we should, we should see them. If we don't see them monthly, we're going to have to ask for them. But I'm just thinking.
We have no problem sharing them, it's fine. Well, we can have Kohler Ronan send them to multiple people at once and then there's less forwarding around.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking simplifying it for, for Nancy or the next chair's benefit. You know, if, if they're all coming at relatively the same, to the same place, then we can deal with them as, at one meeting a month instead of as they come in, things like that, so.
Can I make one suggestion?
What's that?
Can I make one suggestion?
Sure.
If you don't mind, can you, like, one of you, Jen or Tyler, let Sam and Purchasing know the vendors that you're going to be expecting him from? Because sometimes he'll get an invoice and he'll have no idea where to go with it. You know what I mean? So if you like, let him know what vendors are going to be sending invoices, then at least he has a list in his head of who's going to be getting what, and he'll know to put them, he'll probably never put them in, but but as long as he just consolidates them to one person, okay?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, because I know each project has a, finance has like a number for each project, then we could even put them on the invoices if we want to, but if they want us to.
They, they just always come.
If it's going to go to finance, then just, we want to give Sam a heads up, because I've had a few times when they're not aware of a certain vendor on a project, they get it, they don't know what to do with it, they wander around the building saying, who does this? They don't literally do that, but eventually they figure it out. We let them know ahead of time, that would be good. They always go to Kathy, because Kathy knows everything. But yeah, if that's going to happen, it's going to go to finance, then we give them a heads up. Okay, so anything else on HVAC? For objects, any other questions or comments or input, et cetera? Okay, so I think we can move on. I, I'm going to ask if our next meeting would be January 20 something. I'm, I'm thinking that we probably should have that meeting, 22nd. That'll be after your kickoff meeting and you may have some things that we need to know about, et cetera. I'm expecting this invoice cycle to be monthly for most, from most contractors. And we only have a handful, so we may be getting invoices by the end of each month and then we deal with them at the meeting, the first meeting of the month. But as we discussed in our December meeting before we approved the meeting schedule, the two meetings a month was a necessity for, especially the school renovation projects, Johnson and Rockwell. If we don't need the two meetings, it's much easier to cancel one than to try to pull up a special meeting. And so, you know, if we don't need another meeting in two weeks, fine. But I'm kind of thinking we're going to get an update once you do that onsite meeting, things like. Just sort of see where we are. Especially since we have new members who will need to learn everything. All right, so thank you school Board of Ed peeps, we're going to do our last item, which is municipal center renovations. So STV and Tyler and Jen, thank you. You can stick around if you want. But you don't have to.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Everybody, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so municipal center locker room renovations. Dan and Rachel and I met with Peter Ecker back in December. That was the earliest we could get together, I mean, some people were away and whatever. And even though Architects Guild is not going to be able to continue to work with us due to some town budget or insurance requirements, et cetera, they want to make sure the project happens and they want it to go forward. So they are very willing to work with us as we go into figuring out how that's going to happen. And some suggestions were made about like with, and John Menti had mentioned this too, a couple other people did, when we did the GP room lobby and we had Gordian do the whole put the costs together using the state budget, et cetera, state budget or state contract list, and then BMP, the contractor. Peter wondered if we could go through Gordian and BMP to get plans updated and then get the project started. So Dan was supposed to check with, because the town had retained Colliers as a project manager. But we don't remember whether it was the end of this year, the end of last year. Do you remember?
I don't know, I thought it was.
I think it was through the end of 2025.
I think.
So Dan was going to check into that, and then Rachel's supposed to be checking in with Gordian and with the holidays if things didn't happen. Gordian and BMP, because I know that as a like an owner's project manager, like STV, we know that they have a division that'll do plans and things like that if we want. Colliers may have that too. Gordian may also have that too. Is that something they could do coming off the state contract list of getting, either they can do it or have somebody recommend or go through the state contract list to get an architect, structural engineer, MEP person to put all that together for us? So that's where we are with checking into that. The biggest thing is Peter Ecker's very wants to be helpful. He wants to be, you know, he's okay with us using all the information he's already put together. He just wants to have a, sort of like a disclaimer in place that whoever takes all that information checks measurements and things like that and doesn't just go and say, here's here are the measurements, and then they end up being wrong. So he doesn't want to have to have it fall back on him, which I understand. So we would figure that out, but he wants to go ahead and have us have all the information that he's put together, plans, and then his kind of new sketches and schematics of, of the proposed space. So that's where we are with that, and hopefully we'll have more info for the next meeting. Hopefully we'll have more people, et cetera. And again, if anybody knows anyone that's interested in either at least hearing more about Public Site, you let me know, or you can let them know, come to a meeting maybe and kind of scope out what we do. Roy, I appreciate your being here tonight, and you know, you're welcome to come to any other meetings or not.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it, so.
Yeah, your, your input is always very helpful and kind of sad to see you go, but we're glad that other people are sticking around. Sometimes it's time to bring in some new folks.
I agree.
And Roy's probably in a place that where it's not minus 10 degrees, so.
It's still pretty cool. Word of merit is up.
There you go. All right, so I think we're done.
Motion to adjourn.
Dave Olson made a motion to adjourn, David Horvath second, all in favor? I opposed.
Nobody.
Thanks so much. Stop the recording.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, Jen. David, I, I've.